Monday, March 23rd, 2020, Board of Trustees meeting, telephonic meeting to order. Entertainer motion for the adoption and approval of the agenda as outlined.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move in second. Just for the record, before we cast a vote, can you, everyone indicate who all is online?
Todd Garrett. Joyce Green. Chris Frazier.
Okay. Probably move in second, all in favor by no by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Hollenshed is also on the phone.
Right, I have him indicated.
I move to approve the motion to suspend Policy BE. As your latest taken title, public comments such that public comments should not be an item on any board meeting. Go ahead.
All right, before we get to that, we need to approve the minutes.
There's approval.
Can I say?
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, hi, um, I got 401, where are we on the agenda?
Who's that?
Is this you, Mrs. Darby?
No, this is Ms. Coats.
Okay, Cindy, Cindy's also on the line. We're just approved the, uh, getting ready to cast a vote for approval of the minutes.
So, we've already approved the agenda, you people need to slow down.
Yes.
Sixty seconds, I shouldn't have to, not be able to have a vote on the agenda. But, tell me when, are we joining the meeting?
Yes, we started exactly four o'clock, and we had a call, and we began the meeting. So, entertainer motion for approval of the minutes, all in favor by no by saying aye.
Aye.
So is Julia not, is Julia not doing the, um, having us join the meeting online?
Are you, are we on?
I'm taking it online if they want to, they can, or I'll take it manually, either way.
Okay, so, so Ms. Coats, we're doing it manually, uh, one by one, and, um, so, what I would do at this point, since you raised that question as we begin early on, uh, I will, I will ask for verbal approval, and I'll call you name by name, uh, for the approval of the minutes. Uh, Ms. Coats, how do you vote?
Yes.
Todd Garrett?
Yes.
Joyce Green?
Yes.
Chris Frazier?
Yes.
Kevin Hollenshed?
Yes.
Uh, Kate Darby, are you online?
She can't get in, I'm calling her now.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna move on, uh, Policy BE, board meetings.
I move to suspend Policy BE.
Second.
Probably move in second, uh, for approval. Uh, Ms. Coats, how do you vote?
Yes.
Todd Garrett?
Yes.
Joyce Green?
Yes.
Chris Frazier?
Yes.
Kevin Hollenshed?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, motion passes. Next item, item E.
Make a motion to convene executive session, consider items covered by attorney-client privilege. Thank you.
Probably move in second, we'll now go into executive session. Okay, all right, all right, we're gonna reconvene back into open session. Entertainer motion for item, uh, 4A, contrite your matter. Is there a motion?
Is Ms. Coats on board on the call? She is, she didn't actually wanna have to make the motion, but I would move to, uh, you people literally never asked me to talk in your entire life, and now you choose to ask me to talk. Please, yeah, I, I would make the motion that we, that we deny this request and, um, instruct the staff to, um, enter into a conversation with Carolina Voyager.
Okay, is there a second? Who seconded that motion?
Second.
Ms. Darby? Okay, the motion was moved by Ms. Coats and seconded by Ms. Darby to, um, do you have that motion? I'm sorry, second. So the motion, uh, Ms. Coats, I just wanna make sure, and Ms. Darby, uh, the motion was to deny, uh, the request and to enter into a conversation with, uh, Carolina Voyage, is that correct?
Yes. Kate, does that match what you thought?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We're entertained, okay, there's been probably move in second, guys, I'm gonna have to call you individually by name, so just be ready to answer, uh, yes and no. All right, uh, Ms. Darby, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Garrett? Uh... I'm sorry? Mr. Frazier? Okay, Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Joyce Green? Joyce Green? Priscilla Jeffries?
Yes, yes.
Reverend Collins?
No.
Mr. Hollenshed?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes, that motion carries.
Did you ask me for my vote?
Uh, you made the motion. Okay, your vote?
Okay, just make it sure. Okay, so, can we get a, can we get a count of the vote?
Yes, eight one.
I thought it was Todd and Reverend Collins.
Eighty-two, to seventy-two.
Uh, are you changing your vote, Mr. Hollenshed?
No.
I think we're trying to tell.
Todd and Reverend Collins voted no, out of nine board members.
Todd Garrett, you voted no?
Somebody, somebody didn't vote, the other screen.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, all right, so that motion carries seven-two, Mr. Garrett voting no, and Reverend Collins voting no, is that correct?
And did Joyce, did Joyce get back on the phone to vote?
Yes.
Yes, I did vote, I don't, I heard me or not, but I voted yes.
Okay.
Okay, I couldn't hear you.
All right, so Reverend, Reverend Collins and Mr. Garrett voted no, that motion passes seven to two. All right, item, uh, 4C, out of county request.
I move, I move to approve the request to remain for the balance of the 2019-20 school year and tuition fee waived for the current school year only.
Correct.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Darby, seconded by, uh, Ms. Coats, uh, how do you vote, Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yep.
Ms., uh, Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Hollenshed?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and that motion carries unanimously. Item 4D?
I'm sorry. Did you, did you call my name and I missed it?
Uh, you seconded that motion, so I'm assuming you're with that request.
Okay.
But I'll call your name, Cindy Coats.
I wanna make sure we're recording the vote.
Cindy Coats?
No, as long as you're recording my vote, is it yes, that's fine, I just, I don't, remember, I can't see y'all.
Right, so if you, if you seconded the motion up, you, you're agreeing to the motion that was made, so I'm taking your motion as a yes. But I will call everybody's name, just for clarification.
Well, no, if we know that, then the two people making the motion just don't worry about us then, you're right.
Thank you. Uh, item 4D?
Aye, this is Kate, I make a motion to return the student to school.
Second.
Probably move, uh, by Ms. Darby and seconded by Reverend Collins. Uh, Mr. Garrett, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yep.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Hollenshed?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that motion carries unanimously. Item 4E?
Uh, this is Ms. Darby, I move to return the student to school.
Correct.
Second.
Probably move, now, who, who's, that wasn't Ms. Coats, who was the first person that said yes, second?
Reverend Collins.
Reverend Collins, all right, probably move by Ms. Darby, seconded by Reverend Collins. Mr. Garrett, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Hollenshed?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and that motion carries unanimously. Item 4F, uh, I will make, uh, the motion in reference to the procurement, uh, appeal. In order to correct a typographical error in the last sentence of section 4410.7 of the CCSD procurement code, when it was revised on January 7, 2011, I hereby move that the board should accept the recommendation of staff and council to correct the last sentence of section 4410.7 to read as follows. The filing of an appeal does not automatically stay a decision of the panel. Council and the staff are hereby authorized to take all steps necessary to implement this correction to the CCSD procurement code immediately, including, but not limited to, making this correction on the version of the CCSD procurement code available online, and providing notice of this correction to the appropriate representatives of the South Carolina Physical Accountability Authority.
Second.
Probably move in second, uh, Ms. Darby? How do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Could you call?
Mr. Frazier?
Yes, I vote yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Ms. Coats?
No.
Reverend Collins?
No vote on that.
Mr. Hollenshed?
I'm not voting on it, no, I'm not voting, no, not voting.
So you abstaining?
You abstain.
You abstaining, Reverend Collins?
I abstain.
Reverend Collins, you abstaining?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Mr. Hollenshed?
No.
Okay, now motion passes, 711? Yes.
That's not correct.
No, that's not right.
What's not correct?
Six-two-one.
Why is that six-two-one? Seven-one-one, right? So Reverend Collins, Reverend Collins, you abstain, is that correct?
Yes.
And Mr. Hollenshed, you voted no?
Yes, and Ms. Coats voted no.
Oh, Ms. Coats, you voted no as well?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay, Ms. Coats voted no, I did not hear that no from Ms. Coats. So, so that motion still does pass, uh, six-two-one. Okay, guys, I just ask that you please, uh, speak clearly, and there's a lot of noise going on in the background, so it's hard to hear the votes coming from other individuals. So we just ask that you please mute your phone, uh, until you're, uh, ready to speak so that we won't get all the feedback. All right, at this time now, we'll have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, very quickly, um, we want to thank all of the teachers, um, other staff members, parents and students for your collaboration and cooperation over the past couple of weeks. We're in unprecedented and difficult territory. We are deeply grateful for the work that teachers have done to get packets ready for students, and we look forward to connecting with our teachers as soon as we get direction from the State Department of Education and the governor regarding the duration of the time that schools will be closed. For parents and students who are stressed either because you don't have devices or because the homework load is unreasonable, we will work to try to get more devices to students, and we will, with respect to homework, be very, very generous and gracious in understanding of your personal adjustments and the situations that you are facing as families. Um, moving forward, we need to have a better and clearer plan so that we make sure that we are connecting with all of our children, and we will do that just as quickly as possible so that we're ready to run, um, a, a different sort of platform after our spring break. Um, so we're expecting on April 13th that we likely will not be back at school, but we have to await official word. The governor and state superintendent have told us that they will let us know by the end of the week what to expect in terms of the duration of the school closure. At this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Jeff Baroi, who will talk about some of the work that we're doing in our operations divisions to support our schools, families, and students. Mr. Baroi?
Thank you, Dr. Postaway. Uh, so first off, to echo, uh, Dr. Postaway's comments about the support we've received from, uh, everyone involved, uh, whether it be the families, the faculty.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is Joyce, and I cannot hear Jeff.
Okay, just one second.
I'm moving over to the microphone. So, um, I, I wanted to echo the comments that we are extremely grateful to the families and the faculty, uh, at our schools for making our jobs a lot easier to operate during, uh, this period of time, and we're very proud to say that our, uh, off-school, uh, operations are, uh, fully functional at this point, and we're offering meals at 58 different locations. We served 8,000 meals yesterday, 8,000 meals, 8,000 meals on Friday, 8,000 meals today, uh, that's between lunch and breakfast, uh, so that food service operation is going extremely well. Uh, from a wide front, we've got 11 buses that go out in the afternoon and 10 buses that go out in the morning, uh, they are stationed for a four-hour period, that multiple, at those multiple community and school sites, and we've also expanded the bandwidth at 10 schools so that around that school, there's plenty of capacity for, uh, students to download materials onto their, uh, devices. Starting tomorrow, uh, we are offering a route repair service, so that'll be posted shortly in which, uh, every single day, we will establish, uh, a route in which a bus will go with a repair technician to either repair a student device or replace a student device. There'll be 15 different schools on that route, and certainly in the future, we can look at adjusting that route. In addition to that, a, a number of our schools are establishing a, um, one-time issuing, uh, program. If they did not issue enough devices, uh, before we close, uh, they're looking at, at lining up a separate aid to do that, those will be done in a school by school basis. That's all I've got from our side.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Baroi or the superintendent? So I do have a question.
I'd just like, I'd just like to commend, uh, the staff for doing such a great job, it's a very stressful time for everybody, and, uh, the team's done a great job, so I think we need to give them a nod.
Thank you.
Joyce.
So I take.
Other school districts are not doing as great a job as we are in other parts of the country, so congratulations.
So I do agree that the, uh, staff has definitely executed, um, plans and measures in place to assist us in moving forward countywide, um, and as we begin to move forward, we do have to fine-tune some things, um, as we begin to look ahead for the remaining of the school year. But presently, um, I guess my question is, uh, I've gotten some calls from parents as far as how do we fully engage kids in the material that has been shared, to where sometime parents don't quite understand how to really deliver or, or give instructions to that, to that child. What measure are, are in place to help assist parents, assist, uh, their, their, their very own, uh, child that's trying to learn this material?
That's the $64,000 question, as they used to say. I'm sure inflation has changed that number, but it's, um, part of an almost daily discussion that we have at the state superintendent of schools, who's pointed out to us that online learning was intended to reinforce concepts and skills that were already taught. It's not, um, a very good medium for teaching new material. So when we come back from our spring break, we hope to have better supports in place. This, the state superintendent is working with South Carolina Educational Television to see if they can convert to delivering some of the required courses. And across the state, we're improving our ability to do virtual enrollment of students so that they have time to enroll and are in direct contact with, uh, an expert teacher who may be teaching multiple children around, multiple students or young people around the state. Right now, the focus is on seniors who need to get specific credits in order to graduate. Um, we've all tried to make the, um, adaptation very quickly, but there's still much to be done. So we know that we cannot, uh, deliver through packets or online programming the quality and extent of the instruction that we've delivered every day in the classroom. So, um, we don't know the answer to that, but we realize that it puts a lot of stress on parents and children. We've heard from a lot of parents who've worked all day, may, maybe medical professionals coming home from work, or who are struggling themselves to teach, um, the, the content. We've seen lots of memes about this new math and, uh, carrying the one into the tens place, um, as being an unacceptable explanation for, um, an elementary school student. So, um, I don't have a good solution for that yet, but we hope to have a much better solution on April 13th.
So let me ask a question, you may not be able to answer this right now, but is, is it possible that teachers can upload, uh, online, uh, an audio or visual on how to, um, solve a math problem or, or, or give explanation about a, a lesson or, or material that was sent home with, with all of the students? I mean, is that something, is that capability there, uh, to be able to give some type of guidance to where parents can literally watch the teacher, uh, either explain how to do that particular package that was sent home or material, or, you know, how, uh, the, the solve a problem with that concept? Is, is that possible, that technology?
The capacity is there, the capability and technology are there. Carolyn Belcher and her staff are working now on the fundamental lessons for every course or grade level. The challenge that will, we will still face on, on April 13th is how to get all of our children in a situation where they can access that teaching. So that's precisely the type of, um, instructional support that's occurring right now, but that we will not have ready for a couple of weeks.
Okay, I know it's changing time, and I just wanna say again, echo, thank you so much, uh, to you and the staff for, uh, what you're doing to, uh, make learning still possible, uh, as we move forward.
Thank you, and we wanna, we wanna thank MUSC and the work that they've done on the public campaign, hashtag flatten the curve SC, as well as other community groups who have, um, started the effort, the unite to fight effort. Um, we are combining resources all over the community, trying to figure out how to, how we can help the medical professionals and first responders, and they in turn are trying to help us figure out how to support families who depend on, uh, the school system to get services to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time now, we're going to, um, item 6A, um, spring 2020 ban, uh... Hang on one second, we'll get there. All right, is there any, uh, is there a, a motion on item 6A?
I'll move to approve the 2020 bond anticipation notes that have submitted in the, uh, in the agenda.
Second.
All right, probably move in.
I have a question.
Okay, probably move in second, uh, moved by Mr. Frazier, seconded by Mr. Garrett. Ms. Coats has a question?
So in there, um, it says that we are selling or, uh, doing a bond anticipation notes for mission critical projects, and if you go further down in there, it says mission critical, um, projects are collectively defined as Mary Ford, Chikora C., Williams Amendment, uh, I, I just wanna clarify that you have, that, that we're, we're using mission critical in other places in the district to mean instructional delivery, but this is saying the mission critical means, um, fixed cost of operations and construction and, and building facilities. Are we correct that this money is strictly going to be used for buildings?
Okay, um, you want Mr. Kennedy or don't know? Mr. Baroi will, will respond to that, Ms. Coats. Just give him one second as he come closer.
So, so Mrs. Coats, the projects listed in the fixed cost of ownership include projects to support the mission critical, um, decisions that have been made by the board, including those projects that you just mentioned. Within the fixed cost of ownership list that was approved last month are the individual dollar amounts for each of those respective projects.
So to be clear, you're not selling the bond anticipation note to some mission critical items that we've discussed throughout 2019 in terms of educational delivery, you're only approving this, or asking us to approve the bond anticipation note to approve fixed cost of operations related to mission critical, to fix buildings and facilities? I think it's just a little bit confusing if you use the same words to mean two different sets of funding. So this is only to handle buildings and facilities, this is not to implement mission critical items approved by the board.
I just know that the products that I needed funding for are on that list, I would have to defer to Mr. Kennedy to determine where the rest of that funding in the ban goes.
So, uh, Ms. Coats, uh, this is Doc Kennedy, if, if you refer to the, uh, the dollars that were reserved by the school board for mission critical, uh, to, uh, address instructional, um, requirements in the district as, um, as they come through the mission critical, uh, award, uh, that, uh, those types of items are not in this ban, it's only the thing that, that Ms. Baroi, uh, talked about, so they are.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Two, two completely separate items.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further questions? Hearing none, Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote? Reverend Collins, how do you vote?
No, we are fine.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hollenshed?
Abstain.
Reverend Collins?
I vote no.
Uh, Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes 711?
And I vote, I'm just, Garrett, I vote yes.
Right, you seconded the motion.
Uh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. No worries. All right, item, uh, 6B? Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, probably move by.
I have a question.
Okay, probably move by, uh, Mr. Frazier, seconded by Ms. Darby. Uh, Ms. Coats?
So, uh, the Goodwin HVAC and the West Ashley HVAC, which are what we're taking this money and allocating it to, were they on the original project list approved by the board?
Yeah, this is, this is, uh, Mr. Baroi, Mrs. Coats, and the answer is yes. They're on the approval list.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? All right, Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that motion carries unanimously. Item... Item 6C?
I move to reallocate firms as presented.
Uh, who moved first? Ms. Darby, you moved.
Kate made the motion, Cindy seconded.
I'm sorry?
Kate made the motion, Cindy seconded.
Okay. All right, are there any questions?
And, I do have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Coats.
And this is for Jeff. I've, I've asked, I've, I've, I've asked this before, but I've also gone back and been told to, that this is, again, it's not something, I'm not getting the same answer in two different places. Um, in the TIF for, um, Weber, the, the, the Larson Elementary School, do we have title to property for the new Larson Elementary School?
What's that got to do with this motion?
That it's, uh, it, it, it determines whether this money is gonna be spent buying property for Larson, or whether the Larson Elementary School property is included in that TIF that we did, and if, if it's, if, if it's, if we have to buy Larson, Chris, in a nutshell, can I buy 25 acres out here in North Charleston to put a, uh, an elementary school for $1.25? I buy 25 acres out here in North Charleston to put a, an elementary school for 1.4?
So...
I can say no to that.
So that's the question is, do we own property to build the Ladsen Elementary School that we thought we owned as part of that TIF? If not, then this is going to get sucked up into all that money.
So, Mrs. Coats, this is Jeff Barrowey again. We believe that the agreement within that TIF will provide us that land. The land owner is currently working on the agreement to give us that property. We do not anticipate having to use these resources for that land at this time, but the agreement is not in place at this point. As far as speculation of where this funding would be spent, I'd like to reserve that for executive session. We have some ideas on possible land purchases, uh, but it would essentially, it would, the money would be moved into what already is a, a sales tax line item, and it is to buy district four land. When we bought Deer Park years ago, that would, that was, you, we bought that with land from sales tax, there is a small amount of money left in that line item. This money would go towards supplementing that line item to expand campuses within North Charleston where needed. So we would come back to the board...
Uh, I, I understand that, all I wanted to make sure was, do we have property to build the Ladsen Elementary School that we will own? And I think what you're saying is, we don't yet have a title to that, but we do believe we're going to get title?
Yes, ma'am, exactly.
Okay.
Alright, any further questions? Reverend Collins?
Yes. So, so when we did the referendum, uh, to, to start a new Ladsen School, uh, was, I'm not clear, was that to rebuild Ladsen where it's at? Or was that to buy, to relocate the Ladsen and build at Engelside? I just wanted to look at the referendum, but this is not clear to me, and I thought we had thought initially to rebuild the Ladsen Elementary where it is. But, Mr. Barrowey, they didn't clear it up. This would be, this would be the Ladsen here at Engelside, is what I'm saying, right?
So the, the future of Ladsen Elementary School and that plot of land will be put forward in the, uh, Phase Five master plan that will be coming to in the next couple of months. So we're going forward, a recommendation for the Ladsen campus in that, in that proposal.
So when the maximum due to referendum says, uh, the Ladsen, uh, if you still rebuild or, yeah, at least do it somewhere else, is what I'm trying to compare it.
Ladsen's never been on a referendum, is what he's saying.
Correct, we do not have the Ladsen... We, we do not have the Ladsen project on a referendum at this point.
Okay, what was that, phase five or six? Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Okay, don't worry. Any further questions?
Other question?
Hearing none, uh, Mr. Garrett, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Hi.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes, I vote yes.
Mr. Hollenshed?
Yes.
I vote yes, that motion carries unanimously. Consent and general items have already been voted upon. Thank you so much, board members.
Good job.
Uh, this concludes our, our board meeting. Be safe, and, uh, until we're, till we're able to meet again. Have a good evening.